...to order, I ask everybody to rise. We're gonna have Felix Gines do the prayer and we'll have the Godfather, the Council George Lawrence, do the pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, give us all good graces. We come to you, oh, Lord, thank you and we get many, many blessings. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for each and every one of you that come out tonight. We thank you for this great wonderful state. We thank you for all the representatives here doing everything we need to do for the city of Biloxi. We thank you for our mayor, our city council, and those that come on. We ask all in Chief's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I surrender to the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Felix, I thank George, the Chair will, first of all, just let me announce this, Councilman Schumaker is dialing in electronically, so all the votes will be to be, you need to state your name and attach your votes, okay? With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll say it.
All right. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those votes, oh, she carries, Clark could read these.
I'm moving the agenda amended.
I'll say it.
We gotta, we gotta state the revisions first.
We do it there.
For the record, for the record, we need to, we need to state the revisions. Okay. All right, Mr. Lawrence?
I'm moving the agenda amended. What did he say? Where are we going?
Lawrence Yehi.
Lawrence Yehi. Lawrence Yehi. This is to suspend the rules.
Lawrence Yehi.
Yes.
Gines Yehi.
Flavin Yehi.
Gilbreth Yehi.
Schumaker Yehi.
All right, the Yehis have it and the Yessus have it, unanimous. All right, if Clark would read the revisions.
To the consent and to add five R residential authorized and accepted change order number thirty-nine to the destruction agreement of the PK Brothers Construction Company.
All right, you ready now? I'm ready now, Ms. Lawrence.
I'm moving the agenda amended.
And I'll say it.
All right, Mr. Lawrence moves the agenda as amended, seconded by Mr. Gines.
Yes.
All right.
Gines Yehi.
Gilbreth Yehi.
Schumaker Yehi.
All right, motion passes unanimous. We'll move on to the presentation and agenda, the Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We got enthusiastic, great, the pledge of allegiance, great enthusiastic crowd, so I think everybody's smiling faces tonight and I think we'll get through this even though the weather might be bad, but I think the weather here is good. Part of our consideration tonight is our nomination for this Chief Administrative Officer of the city of Biloxi. And before I introduce Rick, I wanted to say that it's been just tremendous honor to know him and to understand, he's been a life of service to community, to the state, and to our country too. He knows a lot of folks that, worked a lot of folks that, that we, you know, he'll hold there and have to, you know, interact with. So I think we, with his skills and his resume that you have before you, will show that he's well-suited for our job and I'm enthusiastic about, and he's got some Biloxi DNA in him, so he, all I can say is I want to introduce Rick Weaver to, you know, give a change to say a few things about this opportunity, I think we both feel.
Mayor, I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
He didn't play left guard or right?
No, no, no.
Okay.
But he has, you know, I'm familiar with this. You know, military Colonel, US Army for a time, and has a wealth of, I think, operational knowledge that we're gonna put together and put into use and I know several folks are in the audience to show support because I think this is the right person in the right fit for our city of Biloxi. So Rick, if you could come and say a few words.
My name is Rick Weaver.
You're the President again, thank you, Rick. You have three.
I never work for the organization, so I don't know if I told them that. My name is Rick Weaver, and I'm a lifelong oath questioner and a leader down over the city. I commanded everything from Kemp King to Kemp Shelby, as you can see, recently, I was a construction facility officer for the entire Mississippi National Guard. So I manage a huge budget and also constructions all over the state. So from an operational standpoint, I manage Kemp Shelby as an operations officer. So I think I've got a lot of experience on that that would bring him to work with the directors here and to work with the Council and the Mayor. And I'm looking very forward, not only being able to bring some of my insights to Biloxi, to y'all to educate me as well, but also to start this city for the sake. So if there's any questions that I can answer for either of y'all, please let me know.
Any questions for Mr. Carl Weaver?
Yeah, a couple of questions. You always say that the rehab center, how many of y'all have you got that moved on? A rehab center?
No, I'm not sure. No, he's a C A O. Let me say what happened there.
That's a long.
No.
But there's no one from.
I'll make some.
Yeah, let me add, let me share a little bit about our.
Well, you need to know, and you need to learn something. You talk to folks, we need your help, so.
Educate me on Rick, that's our first thing.
Let me, let me share a little moment as we head. We went over some of the things on the radar, some of the five-year plan, ten-year plan, some of the near term, some of the interactions we have with the federal government, with FEMA and those kinds of things. And I saw that, I think he felt, we both felt that mutual enthusiasm about what we have before us and that really, you know, solidified where, where we need to be together. So again, let me, all right, just getting to be, you know, more positive on where we're going.
Any other questions?
I'm trying to get to hearing these working better than I thought. And I don't feel good. Now, we just hope that you step in for most of the city of Biloxi, gives a bad thing for the citizen, you know, we take him when you provide services to them and that's gonna be your job. If you didn't have a hard job, work with Boko. Say that to him, come on, we.
Anyway, I'm saying, any questions or? Carl, I'd like to ask, Boko mentioned your connection to Oak Street, what's your connection to Oak Street?
I grew up here, I grew up a lot, and she grew up on the point. Now, then my father was a cattle operator, moved to the social, I grew up in the social. So my parents, my family's in the point.
Very good. My father had a gas truck company on Oak Street, so I'm surprised you need just to work at that shop, you know, you can get everybody else. But Carl, thank you for your service to our country and thank you for your commitment to life on your, your selection here later on, okay? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Rick, appreciate it. The last part of my report, I'd like to ask the Council to spread the expenses of our Biloxi travel credit going to the Minister.
All right.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council reports.
Yeah, that's, that's very, very good, right. I'd like to recognize Wayne Graves, after elected, one, uh, Councilman. Wayne, you stand up. Congratulations. You're not gonna go work with Mr. Weaver the next four years, so y'all need to be buddies. Need to get together.
Continue, I'm gonna press on to. You've got to provide a buddy, that's the night deal, that's the care.
Go ahead and announce all of them, Mayor.
Yes, we've got Mike Nail and Dale. Hey, now, we're doing to interact and understand where we're going and then the, I think the concession to move forward with this vote at this time, so I do appreciate that.
I did two things. Yeah. Sam's here.
That's the first time I've had Mr. Lawrence give up the floor to the Mayor. All right, you still have the floor, Mr. Lawrence.
And can I remind you, when we first got Biloxi two thousand and one, with five movies took over, then y'all come along, and we pulled five, y'all with the thirteen, y'all go like that. So now we're doing four more. So Vic Jane is all gonna take the horn, put it with the city of Biloxi, and move the city forward. That's what you hoped y'all did. I asked Boko about this last pad, he was trying to tell me y'all gonna have a setup where you could actually open it up on a point within the next month or so.
Yeah, I think, you know, the separation of the business, plague on equipment, with just the recycling, the removal of the rubberized surface and re-finish it, re-level it, and then with a more permanent painted surface, I think that's why I just played, that's about the point of thousand dollars, they will move more as, as we can.
Only have it ready for the kids, but it's something, that's the name of the game.
That's it.
Like to talk about the Bill Fitch Tournament, had ninety votes, probably a billion dollar worth of votes, you know, it's amazing, we got a seventy, eighty billion dollar toy, you know, usually you can sit on it a little bit, so back to work, kind of like, Felix, you know. It turned out great for the city, and then the biking, I think they hit it by talking about that, and I think that went quite well, so another bit of benefit for the city of Biloxi. All right, so it's, that's what we are touring town, you don't know that. We want people to come to the town, wanna welcome people, that's what we do, that's how we promote town. As I thought in nineteen twenty, when they built all the hotels down here, y'all, I knew y'all weren't around though.
Isabelle.
That's when it really began, we turned into a tourist town, everybody coming from the north down here. You just take the road, for, for, only way you get down is the train. I hope that's, that's how we come to the town we are today, you know, 'cause we got a great neighborhood, we've got great citizens, great people, and people love coming here. And we're gonna keep that up, gonna keep that going for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Okay, I just have two things. Juneteenth celebration coming up, Friday, Friday, June thirtieth, we have the three-on-three basketball tournament, Saturday at the Union Hall at John Henry David Park, and of course at the, the Town Green, late on between two to nine. We have a lot of wonderful things that is gonna be out there. Also, George mentioned biking the coast, biking the beach, I wanna ask Mr. Seaman to come on up and give us a few words. I got a chance to dine on the stage with, you know, Paul Madoff and Brian, and of course we got a little small flat on Front Side, so I could get out there and ride it, but come on up and tell us a little bit about it, and a chance to hang out, drink a half a beer, and enjoy ourselves.
Thank you, Felix, I appreciate you guys coming out and thank you for allowing me. I just wanted to just give a quick recap of this first, what will hopefully be, hopefully be a multi-year event for the city of Biloxi and the coast. I wanna start by thanking everybody on this council, I know that there was a little bit of contention and concern about whether or not we wanted to issue a permit to our, our promoting group, and we ultimately did get that permit, and so thank you all for giving us the opportunity. I think it turned out really well. We had a lot of really good feedback from the people that participated. We were able to, we were really concerned about making sure that everything was just right because we wanted everybody to know that we had our act together. So the infrastructure was really great, we had top-tier performance, we were on the news every single day, I'm sure some of you have seen some of the videos and pictures, we had stunt riders out there on the big Harleys, which was really cool, lighting things on fire was a really great event, had some great concerts. But the ultimate pinnacle of the event was the Real American Heroes Legacy Ride on Saturday, Governor Phil Bryant came down, I was honored to share the stage with him and with Felix and other dignitaries, Cheryl Bruce, the founder and director of the Wounded Warriors of Mississippi. Special thank you to the Mississippi Highway Patrol for giving us escort throughout the entire ride, it was a beautiful ride with Governor Bryant at the front and me by his side, which was awesome. We were able to write a sizable donation to the Wounded Warriors of Mississippi, I'm very proud of that. And overall, the vendors did a really good job, we've already gotten good feedback from all of our sponsors, we've gotten recommitments verbally from several sponsors and several of them saying that they're willing to give us more money. So I do appreciate the confidence of this council of giving us the opportunity to be able to put on that show. I agree with George, this is a tourist town, and that was my, my argument whenever we had this conversation over several weeks, is if we want to acknowledge that we thrive on hospitality, gaming, and tourism dollars, we have to be welcoming to anybody who wants to put on some kind of event that makes sense for the city. A lot of good feedback from a lot of our people that came in and that had never been to Biloxi, they thought it was awesome. Obviously, I need to rethink this next year because it was hot as you can imagine, like a blowtorch down there, but it was, it was really nice tonight. So again, thank you. I do think that one thing that we can improve on, I thought that it was a little bit over the top, needing a tier-one response, and I think that that was very clearly illustrated. I mean, I'm very grateful that we were ready, that we were ready for, like, an invasion. It was, there was a very, very strong presence that, the barricades out a little early, I think created a lot of confusion and wear apart. I'm hoping that we can all get together, I'd love to ask for a side meeting, whoever can help us make a decision, like now, like within the next few days, of a date that works for everybody, including especially the police department, for next year, that we can start planning very, very well ahead of time. We can budget not only for our, but for the city's needs, and so I don't know how I go about doing that, but I'd like to get that on, on some agenda as quickly as possible so we can, I understand a hundred percent the, the need for rest in between these events. I really think something like April, end of April, makes a lot of sense for us, it's cooler, there's not scrape and engine and all of that stuff going on, so maybe, Mr. Flavin, you could advise who I should point that question at, maybe we could do a side.
I think, I think Chief has always been amicable with our, our event promoters and people that put that together. Chief, would you be the point on this, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Cool, great, I appreciate that. And one other comment about the officers out there, everybody had a great act too, they were super helpful. And yeah, I think that all of the feedback that was in the media is not good for us, but good for the coast and certainly good for Biloxi, so I'm happy to answer anyway. As far as I know, there were no incidents and arrests, nothing anywhere in our immediate area because I would have certainly heard about it.
That wasn't your truck out on the, on the beach?
No, sir. I did see that. I did see that, and no, thank God, that wasn't ours, and that person apparently is okay, so. But if anybody's got any questions, I'm certain I have an answer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And give it up for the stunt lady too, don't forget your stunt.
Jen, my partner, I have a couple of thoughts too, could I flip her?
Yeah, you wanna say your name? You were the stunt lady.
She was the stunt, she got jumped by a larceny.
Twice.
Literally twice.
Thank you so much. We were talking about it, and I am actually personal friends with Governor Bryant, I've worked with him back years ago, so I just wanted to kind of give a couple of comments that he gave to me in regard to the ride. First off, he had a great time, he is very supportive of anything to do with the Wounded Warriors of Mississippi, and has already elected to be a big part of next year's event. So, but the first thing he did say when he got off of his motorcycle and after he gave me a hug and said hello, he was like, wow, he kind of looked around and said, "It's kind of a bit overkill, isn't it?" We'll just say that, it was what Governor Bryant said. And I did want to make a note about an incident that happened to me personally. I was driving Governor Bryant after they did their ride, and he wanted to see the church that we have renovated, and so I went and picked him up because he has aged a bit, so I did not want him to have to walk four miles. So I went and picked him up from his motorcycle and drove him back to the church to let him walk through. And when I did that, I parked on the easement, actually on the edge of our property, way out of the street, not anywhere in the road where traffic was going. It was only gonna be about a ten or fifteen minute because he was hungry and he was ready to go get his wife. So I took him on a short tour, and one of the security guards that we had at our gate came running in and said, "Jen, they're about to tow your car." I was like, wait a second, so I had to stop the tour and ask Governor Bryant to hold on a second so I could go out and make sure my car did not get towed. I walked out to three ATVs with like six police officers on them surrounding my car, and I was like, wait, what is going on? They're like, "We're about to tow your car," and I was like, wait a second, I'm driving the governor, I'm not parked here, you know, for good. So the governor just wanted to walk into the church, I'll be here ten minutes at max. And they literally looked at me, they're like, "The governor?" And I was like, "Yes, literally, you wanna meet him?" I was really willing to bring him out there and introduce them. So they did give me a ten-minute timer that said if I did not get my car moved out of that easement within ten minutes, that I would be towed. So I go in, cut our tour short, get Governor Bryant out there, and move my car. I, I wanted just to bring that up because I did not think that that was the best form of, or use of our police force, but other than that, I would say all the other feedback that we got was, was really good. I did see a lot, I'm the one that gets to read all of the hate emails and the good emails too, but I had a lot of people reaching out to us throughout the event saying that there was Facebook comments, Facebook messages on the different city groups saying, "Stay out of the city of Biloxi, there's so many police officers there, you don't wanna go to the city of Biloxi." So I'm not sure, I know that there's a lot of things that we can do different for next year, but I think that is something that we probably should just reevaluate as to how we can make that perception a little bit different. We need the enforcement of the police force, of course, by maybe making the perception a little bit different, that we are more welcoming to our listeners. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you, guys, coming in. Overall, overall, I talked to some officers and they were, they were very, very nice. One of them even come over and helped me with my motorcycle when I had a flat, so everything went well. So thank you, guys, for that, and that concludes my report. Thank you. Ms. Newman?
Do we have any updates on the Garwater property?
Oh, no.
Nothing? Mayor?
No, I think it's still working CSX and equipment, and I think a number of, a number of homeless are, I think, not at that property anymore that we experienced earlier on. I'm not sure where they are, but they're, they're spread around, but, you know, CSX is gonna do their thing as well as whatever property that, you know, the four and, and Congress do, but there's nothing more to have seen as far as interior to the Garwater sign course. Clear.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. McGilbir?
Just one quick question, Ms. Christie, I believe the last life of Ops there has been repaired today, but that project should be, leave it up.
That probably was being done up of the works, but I do believe, I think I did see enough that they had the, there's one last wire that they worked on today, which is what I think it was, is that they were done. But I can verify, just Billy Ray mentioned that.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mrs. Schumaker.
Just one thing, no last year, I was pretty critical of Public Works, they're going to pass a cut in, and I will say, this year they've done a great job, that I've done a couple of weeks, and done, and right, I'm gonna give them, and that's all I have.
I think we got close to that, Mr. Schumaker.
You did a good job.
You were, you were cutting, I mean, you were cutting out a little bit, so, but thank you, I think we understood it. I got a couple of things, I'd like to follow up on the, some of the comments on the biking the beach. You know, inaugural year, everything isn't gonna go perfect, but I think it did, it was well-received and it created a good image. It's difficult, you know, to critique our law enforcement, Chief Miller has a commitment to public safety, and if things were overkill, I'd rather than be overkill and we make the adjustments later than to miss something and if we're, we're looking at something that we don't wanna look at. So there's a balance there, certainly. We did have to prepare because this was the first year, we didn't know what to expect on, from a law enforcement perspective. So the resources he had to gather and adjust was certainly something he had to commit to, and he always does that for the citizens of Biloxi, to keep them safe, and also committed the promoter. Y'all put in a lot of hard work, those defenses, concerts were first class, I'm looking forward to a better, better attendance next April when y'all get together and, and go after it for a year or two. On the new councilmen that have won their elections, we got the fantastic four alcohol, and they'll be starting soon, and I know y'all are chomping at the bit, congratulations. It's a lot of hard work to run a campaign, to win a campaign, and to the Godfather, the Council, who decided not to run, longest-serving Councilman, I believe, in the history of Biloxi, I think, you know, who else? I don't know of anyone that served longer, but we certainly appreciate you, George, and to Mr. Lawrence and Ms. Newman and Mr. McGilbir, nothing but respect for you, and I know, hey, everything y'all, y'all have touched has been successful, y'all, y'all have a long history of success, and you certainly have my respect and the respect of Biloxi, so thank y'all. So, let's continue our, one of our sleeves, let's get deep into this agenda, and we'll start with our public, our citizens' comments. We got a total of a lot of time, forty-five minutes, I don't know how it would go, but I'll, I'll gauge it, you have three minutes individually, the clerk will ring the bell when your time has expired. If I can give you another few seconds to finish your thoughts, I will, but I, I need more time to get to everyone, just be respectful of the time. So with that, we'll start on my left, your right, anyone more, raise your hand, be recognized and come up and say anything, public comments. Okay, good. Anybody on my right? Your left? Anybody at the back? Come on up.
Sorry, one last thing.
We almost got there, but that's.
I'll make it quick, I just wanted, as somebody mentioned Public Works, and I had it in my notes, I was just trying to be quick. Cleo and that team and the Mayor's administrative helped us get all the barricades and things with Public Works, and I was so worried because it was like, no, just send an email, and it really all happened like magic, and Cleo is an awesome guy, they did a really, really top drawer job, and it's super, super hot when you're carrying those barricades and things around, so I just wanted to give them a little recognition and, and thank them, as well as all the others that helped us make that work, they, they did an awesome job, so thank you, that's it.
Thank you, all right. One last chance, anybody have a, one last thought before we close this session? All right, with that, public comments is now closed, we'll move on to policy agendas, clerk will read the ordinances.
Ordnance recommended, chapter five, building, adopting applicable portions of the 2024 International Building Code of the Code Of Ordnances.
Move. All right, Mr. Gines?
Okay, building codes, that's real.
Yes, sir, every, every three years, the building codes are updated to keep up with new technology. One of the reasons that we encourage the adoption of these codes is that there's always new technology coming out in the field of construction that's addressed in the new code that might not be addressed in the old code. So what you have before you is the adoption of the building code, the plumbing code, and the 2024 edition. You might ask, why aren't we adopting the 2024 edition when it's 2020? the 2024 edition, you might ask, why aren't we adopting the 2024 edition when it's 2025? The international code however since the code's just yen into 2020 older, and then we go through and make sure there's not a major changes to, to each book, and it, it just takes some time, the, uh, there are no major changes to the book, they did a little reorganization, but, uh, we need to adopt the, the new codes, so that they can.
All right, I'll add, it, it, why don't they come by, that they come by our ratings?
It, it does, we're always required to stay within, uh, one cycle, uh, what this does is helps us on our building department rating, and it also helps us on our CRS program and the participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, we get points for adopting most updated, yes.
All right, any other comments? Any other comments?
Just on the whole career, I think it's something we have to do.
Yes, all career.
I mean, it's just something we do, we do this every year, every, every new year, it's got to, all we got to say within the international building code, so it's just part of the progress that we have to say, that's what it is for us.
Jerry might add too, you know, if you, if you have a, a national flood insurance policy, you know, right now they're in an eighteen percent adjustment codes, nothing's going down, and I guarantee you, if we don't, uh, stay out of stuff on these building codes, it'll, it'll, uh, be, uh, not good for, uh, I, you know, our public to ensure their prime, so it's important, but, uh, it really is impacted this year, I think that the flood insurance is.
Thank you, Mayor, everybody else? Mr. Schumaker? Anything? Nothing? All right, we'll call for the questions, we'll start with Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Newman, yes.
Clavin, yes?
You over here?
Schumaker, yes.
All right, passes unanimously, side of D.
Orders submitted in Chapter Five, Section Five, fourteen-one, by adopting ICC six hundred twenty twenty, state of residential construction in high wind ranges.
Mr. Garance?
Okay, and this is about the end, all right.
And, and the reason this one is listed separately is because they only update this code every six years, so we were already under the twenty fourteen code, and they updated it to the twenty twenty, but they just reduced it this last year, so if, this also helps us with, um, insurance helps our rating and our flood insurance, like, basically.
All right, I'm going to say there's no additional comments on the, these are the next ones, so based on an assumption, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
That is yes.
Clavin, yes?
You over here?
Schumaker, yes.
All right. Make the, passes unanimously, side of C.
Orders submitted in Chapter Seven Fire Prevention adopting portions of the twenty twenty four international fire code.
I can address that. Mr. Garance? Mr. Garance, that's, go ahead, that's a great one.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to give you guys.
At the same, at the same time that the new building code comes out, the fire code comes out, introduced by the same International Code Conference, and so we've worked with the fire department to make sure that we have all the updates that they requested in there, and so all we're doing is adopting the new version of the, uh, international fire code.
You okay with that, Chief?
All right. Well, my question to the chief, how close are we to getting a number one? There's no one that has designated number one.
So, uh, it's hard for me to say.
No, there's.
So, um, to an extent, we're probably the closest in the state, uh, if I had to, uh, make an educated guess, uh, in fact, I was, uh, telling the mayor recently, they actually come in tomorrow, um, so we fill out a, a long extensive, um, questionnaire, they call it, it's an Excel spreadsheet that we have contact engineering, PIS, dispatch, um, get all the water department, Public Works, compile everything, and while we set it off, so they've been reviewing that, um, we were first ones to get it in this year, um, we were actually due last year, they asked if we would postpone for a year because they were swamped with call for it, I think, Jackson. Um, so fast forward to this year, we got it as quick as possible, they've been reviewing that questionnaire, they have to be at, thank the Board Supervisors Conference, and they said as soon as they finish tomorrow, they plan on stopping, we've got to take them around and dispatch, they'll be in town for Wednesday, Thursday, knock down a bunch of the one site, stuff that they like to do, um, you know, but a lot of stuff goes into it, and that's why I say it's a little complicated, uh, a lot of our infrastructure work goes into, uh, they like to see loop systems, so I, I have some of that information, but not all of it, which is really Billy Ray and Tracy and them, uh, you know, as far as dispatch, we do, as far as personnel, we're all people, uh, our body structure, uh, that's what it's all about.
A big part of it too, see, it's the number of personnel related to the number of equipment, you know, thirty-nine pieces of equipment, so we needed, gone from three to four per equipment, I think is a big part of it. With, uh, chief, I think we were number two, the first in the state to become number two, weren't we? And, and it's about four years ago, is it about four years ago?
Yes, sir, it was twenty twenty based on twenty nineteen stats.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Uh, so, yeah, it's hard to tell because like last time, we were, we were two, but it's based on a ten-point scale, we were like eighty-five point something, so we're mid-range, but we got some deductions, and it, it's a whole little formula at the very end that brought us to like a low two. So based on what we've seen, we could be, we're trying to ensure ourselves to be either a high two or the first one in the state.
All right, well, let's get there, should, should you be the first, chief, in Biloxi or in the state to get that number one rating?
Number one, yes, sir.
All right, those have a meaning.
No, I didn't be number one.
Absolutely. All right. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Clavin, yes?
You over here?
Schumaker, yes.
All right, unanimous. Side of D.
Resolution confirming mayor's appointment of Richard Elkes, your as chief administrative officer.
Done, move. All right, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Garance, uh, discussion.
Now we're welcome on the order, time to go to work, you gotta get out of that suit, put your clothes on, get to work, in a dud. From over Biloxi, from over the city, he was going strong, keep Biloxi, but we also grew, so you do both things at one time, God, George, you got it, thank you.
Mr. Garance?
Always good to have a car in the char, man, that's it.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery?
I think it's a great selection, totally supportive, uh, and we, uh, I had to ask you, it was back in around two thousand, when, uh, he was, uh, I think sergeant, and the Gulf War PD, uh, were all qualified, and I think it's a great selection.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker?
All I know that is recognition, and, um, come, right, we know, I recommend, um, many people in the community.
For excellence, I'll be proud.
Okay, we, we, we interpreted, your interpreter told us what you said, thank you, Mr. Schumaker, sorry for the technical difficulties, break up a little bit, but we got you. Uh, I got a question, who's, uh, the person right, right on your side right there?
Yeah.
Okay, good, well, again, I, I don't, it's worth repeating, thank you for your service, we're so excited, uh, I think all of us read, probably read your resume, but we got calls from people all across the state, uh, across other cities, uh, here locally, and, uh, we'd like to echo what the mayor is saying, we're excited to get you, uh, ready, I hope you know what you're, uh, in for, and, uh, you know, let's do it, let's go, so, uh, to further reveal our call for the questions, starting with Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Clavin, yes?
You over here?
Schumaker, yes.
Congratulations, Governor. We'll move on, uh, thank you.
Let it tick off.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, consent agenda, you have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Garance, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, and, uh, first one, oh, we have this grant money, we have cut in this grant money, what are we, we, what are we doing? That's oh.
Oh, like an Oscar.
So this is for the important that we're in at the next phase of the floating dock project.
How about you, we don't know.
I think it's a five day, do you imagine?
One point five, six, six one five, okay, for phase two.
Phase, yeah, phase two, and then phase three, uh, vacation is on here as well.
We ended this thing on the D H, we're done, all right, in fifteen days, how much day is the stripping day?
The stripping day, all right. That's it? Mr. Garance?
I don't have none.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery?
None.
Mr. Schumaker?
I don't have any vet.
All right, and I have none, uh, so we'll call for the questions, we'll ask for exceptions afterwards, Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, yes.
Gotcha.
Clavin, yes?
You over here?
Schumaker, yes.
All right, it, it passes, we'll ask for exceptions, Mr. Lawrence, Garance?
Gotcha.
Ms. Newman?
None.
Clavin, none, Mr. McGilvery?
You over here?
Mr. Schumaker?
No exceptions.
No exceptions, no疑问, thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up code enforcement.
Item A, Handcuff Investments LLC, two twelve Ranor Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, Winging Properties LLC, zero Stephen Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, Institution Intuition Properties LLC, three oh nine Bayard Street, that case has been resolved. Item D, Biloxi Father Ryan House LLC, eleven ninety-six Beach Boulevard, the property's still in violation.
Grass cutting?
Yes, sir.
Any other violations besides that? It's just high grounds?
The house is there, but it doesn't appear to be broken into anything like that, so any one is a good grass cutter.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on, uh, behalf of, uh, Biloxi Father Ryan House LLC, eleven ninety-six Beach Boulevard, there being none, this case is closed.
Item A, Mississippi A Door Square Investments, two eighty Eisenhower Drive. Yes, the house on Father Ryan, uh, that was the picture that you showed here, however, it doesn't show the projection of the tree that's down in front of the Father Ryan House into Caldwell Avenue, which very easily could cause a very serious car accident if it is removed.
The tree would be removed, it's a part of the cleanup.
All right, ma'am, did you hear that?
And the, the homeless people are also using, um, a fire, not a fire hydrant, but a, uh, water spigot to clean, so, if we had squatters there before, um, the city has been extremely responsive and helpful, um, the police, the fire department, the gas was left on, uh, in the building, uh, but these are further concerns of COVID personally, with, uh, uh, one of the members of the LLC that repeatedly, uh, expressed the desire to have the, um, taken care of, given them the name of, uh, someone who's, uh, cuts grass for the area, but unfortunately is not, either not have the opportunity or the desire, uh, to clean the design soil.
Director, any comments on that?
Will, you know, we've all proved this, that will power contract to go out and take care of the violations that are listed, uh, that they're being charged with.
There, there may be a traffic issue, there would be, Public Works might be able to take care of that, uh, so no one can get hurt coming, you know, without watching coming up, or around, or, or, of, of COVID.
All right, ma'am, the comments have been noted, the director seems to be, uh, aware of it, most of that is included, uh, in their, uh, citations or in their preview or purview of, uh, what needs to be corrected, okay? Um, I'll just let, for the record, uh, we can reopen the, the case momentarily, uh, so this case is now closed.
Item A, Mississippi A Door Square Investments, two eighty Eisenhower Drive, that case has been resolved. Item L, Mitchell Associates Incorporated, two eleven McDonald Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item G, Geraldine Harrison Estate, seven seventy-three Monty Vista Drive, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Geraldine Harrison Estate, seven seventy-three Monty Vista Drive? Is there anyone who would like to speak on this property? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item H, Jennifer C Foster, twenty-one ninety-one Sherwin Place, that case has been resolved. Item I, Doug M and High Thigh Lee, two eighty-four Fourth Street, that case has been resolved. Item J, Clay and Brandon Harris, three fifty-one Keller Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item K, Patricia W Bryce Trust, one three one six one Stone Harbor Road, that case has been resolved. And item L, Calvin Moore Muffin, five seventy-five Esters Boulevard, that case has been resolved.
All right, thank you, Director, uh, we now close this, this section of our agenda. Uh, need a motion for routine agenda?
Move.
Okay, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Garance, Mr. Lawrence?
Did we, please, back to, you know, you, I didn't have to talk to you, you know, you got a company that's placed in money, first of all, what you just tried.
Good evening, Council, good evening, Council, uh, so the last time we met, I believe we talked about, uh, over two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, we did receive that on May thirtieth, uh, there's nothing currently in the, uh, pipeline with payments, however, we have a large number of invoices that will be on the June twenty-fourth documents, including pay after payment for contractors, uh, so, early July, late June, we should start having , uh, information on the next round of money, there just hasn't been a lot of, uh, items on the dock, June twenty-fourth, see, and not work.
So we're, we're saying, you.
Uh, we're, we're more than sixty days in advance, so that's why, you know, should we, uh, spend some of the, we're going to be on that, or, 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 or,[1776.13]